We have Mike Doyle is not here, so let's appoint Gavin to sit for Mike. First order of business is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th. There are a couple of typos. Should we not say them, Mike?
No, you could say, it wouldn't be a meeting without.
170 versus is D-E-R-S-U-S, not E-S. I mean, it's a minor. And 184 consensus doesn't need the E-S on the consensus. Anyway, can you beat that? Bruce, can you beat that?
No, I thought the minutes were fine the way they were. I'll recommend it, as they were submitted with the corrections that Dave identified.
You have a second?
Second.
Second. By Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have a staggered response, so minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, next item of business is a public hearing, application 1831 of Alan and Jolene Kramer. Mr. Secretary, can you read the call?
Okay, application 1831 of Alan and Jolene Kramer, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C9 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for an accessory dwelling unit on a property located at 345 West Mountain Road, accessories map P-18, block 503, lot 003, zone R40.
Okay. Does the applicant want to tell us?
Sure. I have a clear statement above the garage above the house.
Can we have your name and address?
Alan Kramer.
Yes.
Jolene Kramer.
Yep, 345 West Mountain Road.
Okay.
And we were looking to add a kitchenette to this finished space above the garage so that we can have our in-laws available for them and also maybe push a kitchen in this space. I'd like my mother to use when she comes with us. Listen, Israel, she'll come for a little while.
Okay. Okay, do the commissioners have questions?
Is it one big space?
It's a fifth bedroom, but it's a large bedroom.
So it's not like a living room, a living area, bedroom?
No, there's nothing in there.
It'd be like a studio.
Yeah, it's all open.
It's all open.
Right, and you're just adding the kitchenette.
Right.
Let me just ask, does this comply with the square footage limitations provided in our regulations?
It does. It does not exceed, it does not exceed 1,000 square feet in the existing house, the gross floor area is just under its 4,900, so it doesn't exceed 2/3 of the gross floor area of the existing residence. So this meets our design standards. They have sufficient parking, both in the garage, and they show some pictures, the exterior of the house. Lastly, they received approval from the Farmington Valley Health District, so the septic system could support the proposed renovation. And really, the renovation is limited to, it's a kitchen. There's no other changes that's occurring, like a second story addition, et cetera. It's just a kitchen going in this finished space.
So there's no bathroom going in?
No, it's already existing.
And the parking's already existing.
There's the bathroom.
No changes on the outside of the house.
And this thing is served by an independent exterior door, so it can form, it provides that exterior entrance that's required in the regs, just to clarify that, too.
Okay. Jackie, any questions? Gavin?
I think it fits our regulations now. I know we're in the middle of updating them, so that may change, but I do think it fits them.
Well, this is in the public hearing part of it, we're not considering it yet. Does anyone, any other commissioners have questions?
My questions were resolved, thank you.
Okay. Anybody in the public want to speak to this application? I think they're all people that are here to argue their own cases. Happy to have no questions.
That's right.
Okay, do they have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing for application 1831.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. So the application is, the public hearing is closed. Okay, the next order of business is to consider application 1831.
No, they're coming back.
Alan and Jolene Kramer. Staff recommended approval, design review made favorable, well, that's on the next Staff report has recommendations.
This is from today.
Okay. Okay, that's, oh, that's right, a motion to approve. Okay, does anybody have any more comments on it?
I think it meets the requirements of our regulation.
Okay. Do they have a motion to approve according to the, how did you do that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application 1831.
Oh, she was gonna do it? She was gonna do it!
Oh, I'll let her go.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application 18-31 of Alan and Jolene Kramer, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C dot 9 of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 345 West Mountain Road. The site plan approval is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for accessory dwelling units. Two, transfer of property will require new affidavit confirming that the residence will be owner occupied.
Okay, did that say site plan or special exception?
This is site plan.
I think it should be special exception.
I apologize.
Can we modify that?
Yes.
Okay. The special exception approval is subject to.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second. By Kevin, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's six, nothing. Thank you. Okay, we have application 1833 of True Made LLC for Simsbury Town Shops owner for a site plan amendment for new signage to the, for retail shop. Is anyone here?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this application was reviewed by the design review at their last meeting, and they issued a favorable recommendation. The public notification sign was posted by the applicant, so there were no issues which would prevent the commission acting on it. The design review board had one recommendation, that the background coloring of the proposed sign matched the existing tenant signs, and the sign conforms to the unified sign plan and also the applicable zoning regulations.
Okay.
Just a question. When I look at the photograph here, Mike, it doesn't look like those, all those signs are the same color.
Design review.
Match the one that's replacing?
Which one? Oh, sorry. Hi, Mark is.
So I didn't hear about this part of it, so I guess, yeah, but which one are they, which
one are they saying that it's?
So this is a sign that you're here to speak to replace one that's on the wall?
No, there is no.
A vacant space.
It is a vacant space, yes.
But all the ones with the light background probably have the same light background.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
I would assume. Okay.
Anyone have any other comments?
Yeah, it works for you, right? Because you were going with a light background.
It's gonna be a light background anyway, I'm fine with that, absolutely. Thanks.
But the sign is the same size, it's not an illusion here, it's the same size.
Yeah, it's the same size.
I lost my paper here.
And the only sign involved is the one outside.
We must have one at the location, though, right?
Oh, inside, yes, and my unit is inside the actual building.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Why don't Jackie do it?
Jackie?
You guys are gaining up on me.
You can be the heavy hitter tonight.
Do we have to close?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve application 18-33 of True Made LLC agent, Simsbury Town Shops LLC owner, for a site plan amendment for new signage for the retail shop, True Made, on the property located at 924 Hop Meadow Street. The sign permit approval is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for the change in sign. Two, background coloring of the sign is to match existing signs.
Second.
Second by Kevin. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, nothing, it carries. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
New business, we have new applications. 1835 of Simsbury Grist Mill LLC owner for site plan amendment. So, Mr. Nelson.
For the record, my name is Chris Nelson, and I am a builder, and we do some development in town. We have our office at 75 West Street, which is actually the address of the property that this application refers to as well. It's the old Simsbury Grist Mill, if you're familiar with the mill. I think you have information on, there's some pictures, it gives a little bit of an overview, as well as some architectural plans of what we're intending and what we would like to do. We came into this very long story about eight years ago, and we bought the Grist Mill, and we found Mill Rights, Tyree Anderson, and we helped him put a restaurant in the mill. And we did an awful lot of work to bring it up to ADA standards, as well as fixed a bunch of things, and really put a bunch of money into the mill. An area we didn't do too much work on was the deck, which is around the back. So if you've been to Mill Rights, there's a beautiful waterfall, covered bridge, and there's a very, very nice deck out back there on the pond. Back in the 80s, when Ensign Bickford really created or renovated back and rebuilt the mill, they put a very nice deck out there. It's on existing piers that are in the water. There's existing structural steel that will be stained, but back then, they actually had a pipe and rail and canvas or plastic enclosure over that area. We haven't had any enclosure over that area. It's just been an open deck for the restaurant. It works great about 15 or 20 days a year, but it's either too hot, or it's too cold, or there's too many mosquitoes, or it starts to rain, and so it ends up being very, very limited in its usefulness. What we'd like to do is enclose that in keeping with the architecture of the mill. We would put some big glass in it. This is actually the mill, this is West Street, right here. And you come into Mill Rights, the main entrance is right here, and this is the pond over here, this is actually the covered bridge, this is where the deck is. So there's two little things wrapped together in this request. One is something the fire marshal wanted to see, he wanted us to put some different doors on the kitchen to make a little bit of smoke there, and we're happy to do that. He told us about them when we were asking to modify a couple of other doors, but that would be wrapped into this, as well as there's a few parking places that were always in the plan to pave and strip, and it was a little flag piece of property that we needed to trade with the house above, and that got completed, and so it's, people had parked there in the past, we did pave it, but it's just artificially adding it to the site plan and striping it, but it was always something that was.
So what did you give, what did you trade?
They didn't have any parking on the side of their house, in fact, they were parking on our property up on West Street. So we said, look, we'll trade this sort of flag lot down here, which was 500 feet or something like that, for a similar amount, more property up above. So now they had better parking, and we were able to just add four spots. It does meet all PAD regulations, there were no issues as far as were we allowed more coverage or anything like that, it doesn't fit into those questions. As far as the architecture, what we were, what we're looking to do, and the deck does need to be rebuilt. Part of that is for some structural issues, it's been over the water for 30 years, and some of the steel that they used back then wasn't quite as corrosive resistant as we would like. The heavy beams are great, but some of the lightweight crossbeams needed to be changed, and so we just stopped using it for a year and a half until we decided just what we wanted to do. So these three, this is the back of the mill building, this is the restaurant as you know it right now, if you sat inside and looked out the window over the waterfall and over the pond. This is the area that would change a little bit, so the exterior would just be three large panes of glass trying to match the other part of the restaurant, and then this area would be its own room, so to speak, and that would be a very colonial, kind of a porch. Really, it's a three or four season porch, but fit it out where it's light and airy and open, and you could open those windows and have nice big screens if you wanted to, or if you want to close them and put a little heat and air conditioning, we have that ability as well. We would be replacing the structure with concrete pipe, so we don't ever have to worry about that corrosive steel issue. And on the end of the building, you really can't see it, this is all in the back of the property, you can see it from the brick path behind the building, and this end of the property, there is a little bit, it follows the existing roof lines. I should have started, but you know, there's no increase in square footage as far as zoning regulations regarding the seats for a restaurant and whatnot, that's all. We're actually going to be limiting and reducing the number of seats from what was approved in that area, and it was all kind of locked together, whether you're a deck or whether you're in the main restaurant, you still had to have the right amount of parking and whatnot. So we're taking that intensity down just a little bit, but it's pretty straightforward. We went through the design review, they were happy to hear what we're doing, and there are actually, a couple of people actually said, gosh, we've been wanting you to do that for a long time. So we would just like to go ahead, put the money into it to, in keeping with the style of the building, just finish and close that.
Does the powder room become four seasons?
Excuse me?
The powder room, you're adding a powder room, right?
Oh, the powder room is the restroom.
Yeah. Is that gonna be all?
That's full-time. This really is going to be able to be used full-time. They will use it for their, not weddings, but small parties and stuff like that, you can go out there, they have a restroom there, so they don't have to walk through the restaurant to get to that. It just made sense if you were gonna put this room out there to put.
And did you, then it's your intention immediately to keep the condition on that space?
It is, it is. If we're gonna do this, we definitely like to be able to use it. There have been no parking, I know when we originally got this approved back eight years ago, there were memories of people parking up and down West Street for the Hopper Tavern, and we actually turned that building around, we made the back to the front, put that parking lot, and we created a parking, so parking has not been an issue. They have occasionally filled up the whole lot if they have two or three events and the restaurant's full, but it really had, and then the overflow parking is actually on Grist Mill Road, and then we just walk down that brick path. So they really don't have any concerns that this is gonna aggravate an existing parking So we really think it's, it's not nothing, but it's something they used to have enclosed, and we would just like to rebuild it, put some money into the place and enclose it so the restaurant can use it full-time.
You removed, said you removed a walkway.
Yes, if you look on the pictures, on the description, on the cover description, it looks like this. Well, it's September. Yeah, the one, September 1992, that on the left-hand side, there's just a little bridge getting out onto the deck from the ground on the west side of the restaurant.
That's on the front, West Street side, okay.
Yes. That was, the fire marshal really didn't let us use that as emergency egress off that deck, because if you don't shovel the stairs in the snow or whatever, it's just a tough way, and there's no handicap access out of there. So all the handicap, not the handicap, there's, the fire egress goes all through the restaurant to get out, and that all meets and conforms to what we're doing right now. There's just, if we're gonna enclose this space, we have no purpose. One of the design review members, said she used to work there, and that was so that they could bring kegs in, because the kegs didn't fit in the front door, so they brought them down that staircase and brought them in the back door. That's why they had a little ramp there, but really, it was an easy way to get on and off the deck from the outside.
Now, the powder room and the storage room that you show here, are those over the water?
A little bit, yeah, they're on the existing deck structure. And they, the powder room actually backs right up to a wet wall in the kitchen, so there is sewer and the water is right there. We would simply be connecting into it with a rear discharge toilet, and it'll be fine. There's no kind of complex plumbing involved.
That's why I was asking about the heat.
We will be using it, this is approved, an insulated concrete pipe, so the floor stays warm, but it's concrete, so you can do anything you want to underneath with water, and it's not gonna hurt it at all. And it'll be insulated.
Some sort of precast?
Yes.
And the conclusion of the design review board was favorable?
Yes, it was. They didn't have any question, in fact, we were talking about the exterior of the building a little bit, and at one point, we might come back and want to change the roof a little bit or something like that, because that roof is getting worn out. It's 35, 40 years old, and it's steel, which is starting to rust, so we've been patching it. But there will be a point, we have to make a decision, come in and see, you can say, hey, we want to change this a little bit. But that might actually be good, they might make it look nicer.
Gavin? Jackie?
It's a nice plan.
Kevin? Are we ready to make a motion? Bruce?
Yes, I'm all set, I think that's a great plan, my question's.
You want to make a motion, Bruce?
I'd like to. Oh, here we go. I have offered the following motion. To approve application 1835 of Simsbury Grist Mill LLC owner for a site plan amendment for the enclosure of the existing deck at Mill Rights Restaurant, elimination of the existing bridge from the deck to land, and addition of four parking spaces on the property located at 75 to 77 West Street. The site plan approval is subject to the following conditions. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for site improvements. Two, the zoning commission authorizes staff to act on their behalf with regards to minor modifications such as landscaping or grading. Any changes to be requested or to be made in writing to the planning department staff prior to implementation in the field. End of motion.
Second?
Second by Jackie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much. You would forward to seeing you out there sometime.
Okay, application 1836 of Matthew Whitmer. I think this is more Stop &amp; Shop.
That is correct. I can't get enough of that, right? I think this is relatively straightforward. So for the record, I'm Matt Whitmer of Phase Zero Architects. What I have before you tonight is a sign submission that was submitted earlier this evening to the design review board. I have the existing elevation and the proposed elevation. Stop &amp; Shop is making a few changes to their branding, some of you might remember the two lights, the streetlight moniker that they had before, which then changed to the fruit basket, and they're not going back to the red and the green lights, so nothing ever changes. The lettering itself is white, and then the, which will be halo lit, as well as the red and the green circles, if you will. Currently, they have People's United Bank here, that's gonna be a new sign, but it'll be similar to what's there, as well as the pharmacy. They had fresh picked produce here at this end originally, and that's changing to serving our community since 1914. That's the lettering on the facade, it's not a significant change, and it's all in keeping with the square footage that was allowed previously. I will say that the two circles were originally shown as backlit LED, those are gonna be halo letter, halo lit, and that's a condition of approval, that's stayed within the requirements of the sign. And then, I also have, very quickly, the two pylons. One is out on West Main Street, the other is closer to the building on Bushy Hill Road. Very small changes, but there's an insert in here for the Stop &amp; Shop with the fruit basket, that's obviously changing to the Stop &amp; Shop with the two, the red and the green light. Same thing over here, they have this area of the pylon, and that'll be swapping out as well to the Stop &amp; Shop. It doesn't change, it's just a slight change in the design of the sign. Any questions?
Kevin? Jackie?
I have a question, doesn't have anything to do with the application, is the corporate logo changing for the Danish company, though?
Oh, for Ahold? I don't know about that. I don't.
They all use that fruit basket, now all the different giant and whatever.
It's on all the brands, too, all the.
Giant has it, right?
Yeah, Giant has it, but the stoplight doesn't work for them.
Maybe they'll be back.
Yeah. See you another month.
I'll be like Matt.
Are we ready for a motion? Donna, you haven't made a motion in a long time.
Put my glasses on, okay. Um, let's see. I make a motion to approve application 1836 of Matthew Whitmer, Phase Zero Design Inc.
This is a draft.
On the back, yeah. Yeah. Agent E and A, I and G, Simsbury Commons Limited Partnership, owner for a site plan amendment for a sign permit for Stop &amp; Shop on the property located at 498 Bushy Hill Road. The sign approval is subject to the following conditions. One, administrative zoning permit is required for the sign, and two, sign lighting is to be either reverse halo lit or external.
Second?
Second by Jackie. Any more questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great evening.
When are they gonna start on the exterior?
So the exterior, they actually started the demolition already.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, yeah, and as you know, the interior is pretty well torn up.
The next meeting is in September.
It's a change of date of C.S.
Okay. We have a application 1837 for a zone change from I-1 to B-3 on property located at 225 Hop Meadow Street. We need to set a public hearing, and we need to refer this application to. We need to set a public hearing and we need to refer this application to the planning Can I have a motion to schedule a public hearing?
I'll move that we schedule a public hearing for the meeting in mid-September. I don't have the date.
9/17.
9/17.
7:00 PM in Town Hall. Mayor second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. I have a motion to refer this application to the planning commission for a zone change recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, nothing. It carries. Thank you. Now, we have a application 1837 for a text amendment. And we have to schedule a public hearing for 1838. Can I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for 9/17?
Which text amendment are you talking about?
This is application 1838 of Thomas Evans and Christopher Smith.
This was the text amendment that Chris Smith did a preliminary last month to the commission? So they took the theme back and proposed something?
I'll motion that we set 9/17 as a public hearing date for application 1838 from Thomas Evans.
Second?
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. We also have to refer this to planning as well.
That's correct.
I have a motion to refer this to planning. There's a recommendation in the zone change.
I'll move that we refer it to planning for review.
Well, second?
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a silent but solid majority, six, nothing. Motion carries. Okay. We have a discussion on the water shortage ordinance and the selectmen would like us to make a statement as to whether we're in favor of or we'd like some changes in the water shortage, proposed water shortage ordinance. Does anyone have some comments on this?
I have a comment, Dave, that, I mean, it's not, well, let me just offer it. That when I read this, I don't know enough to offer a lot of reaction to the sort of technical notions that are here to some degree, but the reference to giving notice to the public, I'm a little anxious about that because sometimes it seems to me that the threshold for meeting the requirement of legal notice falls short of effective communication. You know, it met the notice requirement, but who saw it, you know? I just wondered if when we start talking about water shortages, we need a bit more energy and, you know, investment in the communication side of it. So to simply run something in the tiny, tiny print in a hard concurrent wants, to me, if that's what it ends up to be, that falls a little bit short in terms of communicating to the public so that they know, you know, we've got water problems because there's certain to be hard feelings as some people, both people who are looking to recognize potentially that there are such dire circumstances on the horizon, you know? So I guess I would offer that feedback to the Board of Selectmen and not that I want to offer editorial changes to their work at this stage, but that I am just concerned that that might get, be a topic they could give more attention to and more visibility. Again, with the intent to communicate and to be as sure as we can that every member of the community, or most of them, the property owners, are aware before we get into situations where people can be penalized for washing their car or, you know, watering their garden or whatever. You know what I mean?
There are provisions in the ordinance for exceptions to the policy.
Oh, I know. I saw that, yeah.
And I'm a little concerned. The first level of water shortage thing is not too concerning. Second level, you start to do things like fine people for washing their cars and it seems to me there's a, there's not an equivalence among the things that they are talking about, you know? You can get the same fine for leaving your water running down the street as you can for excessive use for some real requirement. So I don't know that the, that the equivalence is correct for that second level. And what do you guys think about that?
I agree. I agree with you.
I can clarify, so, because I was the staff member that was part of the subcommittee and so at stage two is when, if you go into subsection, well, it's 157-4, and then you have this list of different activities that would be considered, that's when it's mandatory conservation. The Board of Selectmen would at a stage two, review the severity after consulting with both the utility companies and other appropriate parties, severity of the drought and determine not, which one out of the A through I that are specific activities would be considered prohibited for activities that you, you know, for example, you can't water your lawn or you can't wash your vehicles. Those activities then would be considered to say, okay, those are in effect now, those conservation measures are mandatory for people within the town of Simsbury and if you violate this ordinance, you'd be subject to an enforcement action, meaning the enforcement officer would have the ability, whoever's delegated as the enforcement officer, to notify them and say, listen, there's a drought right now, there are conservation measures which are mandatory, you need to stop whatever activity that you're doing. If you continue this activity, you're subject to a citation. And then to get back to Bruce's comment about the public communication, when we get into a point where it's a stage one and they're going to stage two, there, at least what has been discussed is there, one, there would be, that would be a subject that would be on a Board of Selectmen meeting. So that notice minimum would be posted, that this subject matter would be discussed. Two, through the town manager's office, press releases would be released and posted on the town website and said, we're at stage two. This is a, this, we're going into the mandatory conservation measures standpoint. Then after the Board of Selectmen would probably take an action to say, certain activities now are prohibited, that too would be relayed. So not only did you get the warning, we're in stage two, the second notice goes out and says, the following activities now are prohibited. If you are caught doing any of these activities, you can be subject to a fine. And all this is through, you know, a consultation with the appropriate party. So it's not just at a blanket, we're in a stage two, now all these activities are prohibited. And the chairman brought up about the waiver provision, that there is a provision in there that say that there's some reason, there's some use that may fall under one of these categories that says, well, you know what, you're either disrupting my livelihood or et cetera. They can apply to the Board of Selectmen and say, you know, I would like a waiver, an exception to the rule. And the Board of Selectmen can grant an exception to that specific entity, individual, et cetera. So, there's a few checks and balances in this version of the water shortage ordinance.
How about the consideration of a townwide mailing? You could do that for a few thousand dollars. It seems to me that when you go to stage two, if you're going to start fining people...
You're going to like a postcard?
Yeah. You could do that for a few thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's the kind of thing I had in mind. I mean, I don't want to tell them how to do the job, but, you know, a little bit more vigorous and visible.
I think what Bruce said earlier on, you know, just stress, you know, you could support this ordinance, say, we have no technical comments that have an issue from a zoning perspective, however, we'd like to just make the general comment to you and stress the importance of public outreach sooner rather than later in times of emergencies and like you said, measures such as mass mailings or other means to get to the most people in town, when you get into a stage of conservation, are highly important. We'd like you to really consider those options as you move forward.
Okay.
I think they need to do it for both stages.
Stage one?
Stage one is voluntary.
Right, but you need to notify people that there's an issue.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that before you get hit with stage two, it would be nice to have stage one notice.
But what you described, Mike, sounded like when you're in stage two, there's a cease and desist sort of step where the violator's going to be advised to cease and desist or face punishment by a fine the next time it's reported.
Correct.
That's not clear at all in this draft.
Yeah, I think we...
And so I think it's a good idea, but I think, I didn't see it. Maybe I should have read it more carefully, but I did try to take it in. And so if there's going to be a cease and desist or a warning or something like that, I'm fine with that, but it should be prominent in the, so it's a two-step thing. When you get into step at stage two and there's a violation, there's a two-stage communication. One is the warning and the other's the bad news of the fine.
Do they want us to write a letter to them or will they accept our minutes?
They, I could write a, you could take an action and I can write a report and have, prepare the chairman or a letter for the chairman's signature if everyone has like an agreement on some comments to make to them. Sort of what we did with the solar referrals in the past.
Yeah, and we have to do it before our next meeting, which is...
Yeah, because we don't meet till September 17.
Yeah, they want the feedback by the end of this, in two weeks.
By two weeks.
Let me just ask something else. It seemed to me when I read this material that that carve-out for commercial, like you can't wash your car in stage two, but there, this thing doesn't seem to apply to commercial endeavors. Like, I think the businesses in Simsbury, that little car wash that's been there forever over by Staples, is that a Simsbury car wash or is that Ahold?
Yeah.
Is it Simsbury?
Yeah.
So they're exempt from this.
Because that's...
They're going to take your car over.
Because that's their living.
Yeah, take your car over there. You know, or Mitchell's, they have a car wash.
Yeah, Mitchell's Car Wash.
Yeah. So it'll be a boon to those guys, but I understand what they're trying to do.
Luckily, we have water here. Usually too much.
Yeah. I mean, that's, yeah, the counter is that, exactly that. Like Greenwich and others that receive their water supply from reservoirs have a very limited supply. Last summer was a great example where they were, there were some bad situations in the lower Fairfield County. Here, you have it from the grounds and you have a very nice, very large supply underneath the town that you may not...
California, you know, there are places where you can only flush your toilet once a day.
Actually, my sister-in-law lives in San Jose and they've had, I mean, it's a lifestyle change, you know, on a large scale. And she lives in a fairly affluent neighborhood. And house after house, they've torn out all their gardens and replanted stuff that doesn't take water. So there's been major, major change, but it occurs over a period of time. It's not just, you know, a legal notice and such and such.
Maybe we should do that here and it'll cause our property values to rise as fast as they have there.
Right. Lower maintenance, no need for...
I'm seeing here where it has a warning, it just goes right into...
Yeah, that was my point, Kevin.
We would put it in writing.
Okay, so communication and a warning.
For appeal purposes. You wouldn't just issue a ticket because the tickets can be appealed and the first thing that someone would say to one of the hearing officers is that, I didn't know that I can't do this. So, in fairness to how the enforcement would be handled, we would have a written policy.
That should be in the ordinance.
We think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it should be too. So you will draft a letter?
I'll draft a letter and then the two comments are public outreach and a better written enforcement policy.
Right.
The two-tier stuff, the two-tier, whatever.
And I'll have it prepared for the chairman to sign if everyone's okay.
Yes.
Okay, we didn't have any?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Or you can come in and look at it if you want.
No, that's okay. I know you're on top of it.
Okay, now I lost my, I think I'm at the end of the agenda, but I lost it.
No, there's a couple more things. We have some pre-discussions.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we have preliminary discussion of, I think this is titanium trikes, right? Ken?
My name's Kevin Nessier. I'm from 14 Echo Lane in Simsbury. I'm really here representing trikes as well as, I think, Children and Adult Wobbling Project was a nonprofit that we have in town that we've had since 2006. The reason for the discussion is that with your approval last month of Curaleaf moving to 34 Hop Meadow, that's where we do our assembly operations and we believe that the state's going to force us out of that location, even though we have a lease there. We also run Connecticut Adaptive Cycling, Simsbury Free Bike, Trikes for Troops, and we do a lot of the cycling things in town. We've been very involved in getting Simsbury to be a bicycle-friendly community. Most of those activities occur in our shops down behind Andes. We took us six years to find a location and we finally moved to 34 Hop Meadow in December, where we do our assembly operations for trike coming trikes that primarily serve probably 98%, 50% go to injured veterans and the rest go to people with MS and Parkinson's, traumatic brain injuries, kids with autism. So we make a trike that we assemble, we do whatever's needed to allow them to ride the trikes, to get them back on the road. So when you approved the Curaleaf, we went to Mike and Rob and said, can we move our operation, our assembly operation to where we are down behind Andes, which we've been at since 2010, before you passed the center zone regulations, which kind of changed potentially what you could do down there. And what we would like to do is move our assembly operations into that same location and what, in the storage area behind, which we already rent from Andes where we keep all the Simsbury Free Bike and we do our repairs and we have our retail. But it would mean adding a little bit of, probably the only thing, well, maybe the only thing that's technically allowed is we probably have 150 square feet where we do welding of the frames. Everything else is manufactured outside, but we do the assembly operations here. And so the question is, when we asked Mike, they said, well, I don't know that that's allowed there or not allowed there. So he said, bring it in for discussion to the zoning board and see what, use that for suggestions.
Yes.
Of how do we approach this? Where we don't want to move out of town, there's not really a lot of, there's very little area to move to in town where you're trying to do what we're trying to do. That's location since 2010, I mean, we've cleaned up the back down there. We think we've done a pretty good job on making the backside of Andes look decent. And most people don't even know we're down there. They don't, they don't know that Simsbury Free Bike operates out of there or the Adaptive Cycling. Pretty quiet operation. They see the bikes, but operationally, we're very quiet.
How many, in the 34 Hop Meadow location, how many square feet, how many people?
We have six employees, including the owners, and we have about 3,500 square feet.
Okay.
In Andes, we have 10,000 square feet in the storage underneath the old store and then we have the storefront where we have Iron Horse Trike and E-Bike. And we'd be taking the side, the next piece over where they have the Simsbury Light Opera Stores, all their, or not Light Opera, Simsbury, one of the Simsbury operations stores, things in that building. And we would actually put the assembly area there. What we'd like to do is in the storefront, be able to assemble so somebody can come in and watch their bike being assembled right there and make it more of a craft area.
So the issue is, under the center code, what he's, what's occurring out at 34 Hop Meadow Street is actually a use, it's light manufacturing and it could... Meadow Street is actually a use, it's light manufacturing and it could be considered the manufacturing, assembling of equipment, instruments, appliances, precision items, electrical items, sporting goods, et cetera. So the problem is, based on his frontage, it's not allowed in Andes because he...the frontage in the back is SC4. This is not a use that's allowed in the zoning district. So what we discussed was either, one, you'd have to kind of define it as a new use or amend the regs. And we were, as we discussed this, and I went to the property with Robin to kind of observe, we didn't even know the extent of what is exactly being assembled there. It's...Ken is correct, there's very...a lot of it's come in bulk mail, the pieces are just put together. But because you described the specific use in your regs, it couldn't...we didn't feel comfortable to say it was an accessory used to the retail sales because this would really, unless the commission says otherwise, and that's why Ken is here tonight, because as the interim director, I forwarded for, under the code, for the ability to have this conversation on the use and if it's considered accessory or fits under your other retail use, Ken could find that out tonight and then we can handle it through an administrative zoning permit or et cetera. But we were leaning towards it's a light manufacturing based on what the activities that are occurring out there and how it's described. The tricky part's how it's described in detail in your regs under light manufacturing.
But it is an accessory to...
How...what's the ratio, what number, what's the total number of people that would be at the new site and how many would be?
Well, we moved back and forth on the two sites, which is one of the reasons we bought here and that we moved here.
I know, I was trying to get a measure of...
Right. How many will be there?
How many are there now in the Andes location?
There's two people that stay at 34 Hop Meadow that never come over there that would be over there. The other four people are back and forth during the day.
So your six people are in both places?
Correct. I mean, there's plenty of parking, there's...
Okay, I'm trying to get a measure for what's accessory.
So there'd be two people there all the time and four people some of the time?
Well, no, all six of us would be at the new location.
All the time?
All the time.
The new location being?
The new location being behind there, where our retail shop is now.
Now, are you...I get the impression, Mike, you were suggesting that welding may not be covered under the term light manufacturing?
No.
Welding is in light manufacturing and may not be an accessory use.
But if you want a bike shop right here, they're going to be doing...
We're going to be doing welding anyhow in the bike shop.
Right, in any bike shop, they're going to be putting frames together.
Right.
Custom frames, I mean...
This is titanium welding?
Simsbury bikes.
It's titanium, right, but we...it's, we don't use anything fancy.
If this was outside...
It's open, it's in the open and it's about 150 square feet out of 10,000 square feet. So it's a very small, one small area that we...
So the welding isn't a threshold that we need to find a way to...
It's critical to our operation, but it's not critical, it's not a large use of the space. And I think that's under the regs, the only thing that is questioned.
Doesn't that need venting? Doesn't it need venting?
No. That's the way, because titanium is very clean. I mean, there's, it has just regular air, you know, it's like your air conditioning thing, it's not a separate venting. We don't, it's not like aircraft titanium where you have to be in a...
Airspace, yeah.
I don't remember what they call it. The special rooms and the indoor tight rooms and all that, this is just out in the open.
So one of the struggles we had, if this was in one of your business zones, this is a use provided you didn't have more than five employees that were, worked full-time in the manufacturing portion of the business, it would be allowed as of right in any business zone. You don't have that provision because of the assembly process that's occurring with this in the center code unless you feel that it clearly, this, that the retail sales really drive the boat here, so therefore the retail's allowed as of right, this is allowed with the retail sales. And because it was such a change from what's out there, as staff, I didn't feel this is something administratively that I could just say yes or no without discussing this with the commission. I'd prefer to hear your input on this matter than to set, to kick them to either a text amendment, which may or may not be required, or worse, tell them that it's a use that we feel consistent with the intent of the retail in the center zone. So, I mean...
What's the ratio of square footage usage between what you would call manufacturing operation and your retail?
Well, the only real manufacturing would be the welding, which is 150 square feet out of 12,000.
Are you using 12,000 for retail now?
No, not for retail, but for stor...well, no, not technical, retail, total retail's about 4,000.
Out of 12.
Out of the 12, and then the rest is storage.
And the manufacturing...
And the question is, do you put the, I mean, from our own, do you put the welding in the, where it's currently stored or do you put it out where the other retail shop is?
It's like 2.5%.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at is, what's the percentage of...
To clarify, you're using, how much, how many square foot over at 34 Hop Meadow Street for the assembly shop?
Welding is about 150 out of 3,000 square feet.
Okay, so just say it's 3,000 square feet that's devoted to the assembly process. So then you have 4,000 to the retail sales. So it's comparable, that's, that is why I forward this to you. It's comparable to the, what's retail out there if you consider all of the activities associated with putting the bikes together as light manufacturing. But if you don't feel that that is light manufacturing, then it'll boil down to just the welding portion of this activity as light manufacturing, which as Jackie kind of said, it's less, or Don, I'm sorry, less than 2% of the total gross floor area devoted to.
I mean, a typical, I mean, the Simsbury bike has a whole bottom floor.
Right.
They have half, almost.
To put them together.
To put them together and service them.
And like I said, since this is such a large change that Andes space, that is why this is here for your input.
Does Andes have some feeling about this?
Oh, he thinks it's fine. I mean, because we went to him, because technically, if we had to file a text amendment or something, it's his text amendment, it's not ours, I think, because he's the builder.
And this would occupy vacant space at Andes right now, this use, so...
But down below where nobody sees it, we're not doing anything above.
So the question is, based on Ken's description, do you feel the assembly process that's occurring at 34 Hop Meadow Street is appropriate to be considered light manufacturing under your center code, and I can read that definition again, or do you feel it really is customary and incidental to the retail sales, meaning the only, the only manufacturing that's going on there, quote unquote, would be the 150 square feet that is devoting to welding of parts of the bikes? Because that's a, it, the reason I'm wording the question like that is, one is you need to amend the regs, the other is it's allowed if you consider that really 2% for the welding as accessory to the retail use there.
Well, I don't think you can dismiss them. The assembly of the outsourced part-making, dismiss that as light industrial work.
Right, but the assembly's not any different than we do for any bike, and all the bike shops do assembly. I mean, it's not really a difference from what we're doing now for assembly or repair to...
But the question is, the zoning enforcement officer, Robin Newton, can we control what she does?
Actually, and we'll talk about that later because with the short-term residential rentals, because that's, although she took an opinion on that, she referred, we both of us referred this to you for input because, to see if you agree with her interpretation.
Okay, this is a different case.
Right, so Robin came to see what we were doing too.
Yeah.
We're not, I mean, we're not trying to heighten anything.
No, I understand that. What we're trying to do is to avoid a semantic problem.
So Robin would be in the position, if the commission tonight says, "No, we feel that this is retail strictly and the 150 square feet of welding that's occurring there is strictly accessory to the retail use," I will voice, explain that to her and she will follow your interpretation because it is your regulations, you are the commission. She wouldn't make an independent ruling and give Ken a cease and desist once he opens up his business.
Yeah.
Okay, so the assembly of pre-manufactured items is not potentially considered light industry, that's...
That's part of the retail sales operation. The only manufacturing that...
Is the 150 square feet of welding.
Is the welding.
It's hard to say. Yeah, I mean, that is obviously something that is just, you know, part of a process that's a small part of a larger process. The larger process is the retail.
I agree. I think the larger process is the retail and the welding is an accessory to that.
Okay. So then, in order for Ken to expand the business in there, he will not be required to file a text amendment based on the feedback. If everyone, and I don't want to speak for the commission, he will just do a simple change of use, which may be referred to the commission as a consent agenda, et cetera, at a later date. But he will not be required to amend the regulations based on the discussion and description if everyone's okay with that. And I will inform Robin of that when she gets back next week.
Okay. Kevin, you agree?
Absolutely.
Jackie?
Yep.
Yeah, I would prefer to be actually be able to see the regs because here we're getting them interpreted for us. We don't always agree with staff on that.
What page is it you're looking at?
I'm on section four, page 11, center code.
It's in the center code, not in the zoning.
Oh, right. So, and then the use trap is about three pages.
Right, so light manufacturing is allowed, that's which one?
That's not allowed. It's in SC4 and it's based on the frontage. And you can, the description I gave is a...
We're interpreting the assembly to be part of the retail sales operation.
And not an independent activity.
Yeah, because light manufacturing includes sheet metal welding machine or tool repair shop.
Right, and that's 150 square feet out of the 4,000 or more.
Right, we don't, the reg doesn't, doesn't distinguish on the amount of space doing it.
The more regs you have, the more regs you need.
Well, I mean, our thing was, what, if we were already in there as an operation before they put these regs in in 2014, what's allowed in the old regs when we were there?
So if he continued that use prior to the development of current center zone, they would have been considered existing, non-conforming, kind of grandfather, I don't like using that term, and could status quo without worrying anything of use because they left, they abandoned... Yeah, we can't have that discussion.
The question is, if we are willing to make the interpretation that the retail assembly is no different than any other bike operation and therefore the manufacturing component, 150 square feet, is a small fraction and could be clearly an accessory activity.
I think that's what it is, but I don't have a regulation to look at or even help some. The other thing though is that it isn't necessary that we put the onus on the concerned citizens to describe a text amendment. The commission can create their own, propose a text amendment if we feel it's appropriate now or, you know, down the road.
You did this in the past when we had an interested party with the Linden House, if certain members recall that. But remember, there was an individual came in, they wanted to purchase the Linden House, they wanted to put medical offices in there, and it required a text amendment, similar to what Ken's doing this evening. The commission actually submitted that application on their behalf to amend the regulations to accommodate the change.
Okay.
So Bruce is correct, you've actually done this in the past.
We could do that if we wanted.
Right, I mean, I hear the, I'm aware, I understand the problem. I don't know if I could, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think that my inclination is to try to find the simplest solution to accommodate kind of the continuation of this business in light of the fact that the landlord at 34 has just ended, you know, I don't know if you have a departure date set for that property, but...
Well, no, we have a lease, but we know we're going to get forced out.
Well, their presentation two weeks ago was they want to move, Curaleaf wants to move in 2019 and they want to get the renovations.
Right, and we don't want to wait till the last minute either.
Right.
Well, because I was at the hearing to see what they were doing, but I, when you passed that, I said, "We're going to get..."
And that's why proactively, myself and Robin, went out and met with Ken to discuss this so that he wasn't without a home. Because we didn't want to be in that position where Consumer Protection told Curaleaf, "Well, hey, we won't grant you your relocation until this other user leaves the site." So we wanted to, we met with Ken and tried other locations or suggested other locations that we knew of, of commercial space, and Ken kind of said, "I'd like to keep all my operations together if possible."
Yeah, makes sense.
Why don't you and Donna and Mike add that little text amendment to your list of things that you're working on to amend our regs?
Do it.
Speak to the chairman.
Right?
Well, I, I mean, I think that most of us are in agreement that we wouldn't...
We don't worry about it, except Kevin is a little concerned.
I just want to make sure that...
Right, so then we wouldn't need a text amendment.
We wouldn't need it, but we certainly could make sure that when we redo the regs that we...
Oh, that it's in there.
That we cover them.
I'm not sure.
Well, when you, the other, so if you amended the center code, because it'll be two different codes, so that would be a separate action, which I would say if the commission feels a text amendment is warranted in this, we, staff could prepare a text amendment application to accommodate the change for light manufacturing, as I pointed at one use, and permit it on both the ground and second story in the SC five, or SC4 zoning district?
SC4.
SC4.
So no light industries allowed?
There's no light manufacturing in the center zone, the way I look at it.
We, and we try.
It could be that we're overreading this because I know when we were composing, or I was part of that process, but composing this into the center code, there was interest in ensuring that the language would accommodate trades, the creation of some trade opportunities, like people make jewelry, they need to be able, they need to be...
Well, that's what we do. What we're doing is making it so that folks for people...
So your interpretation that you can't do it in the Simsbury center code, there's something, there's a disconnect.
SC4, you can't do it. In the SC3 zoning district, there are some light industrial uses that are allowed. It's, and it's ironic because SC3 on this property is literally at the corners. It doesn't go across the frontage of Andes if it...
Across the rear.
Yeah, oh, across the rear, correct. If it went across the frontage and the rear, Ken wouldn't be here tonight. We would have been discussing change of use and we would have been having him meet with the building official and fire marshal to make sure that were no other issues or surprises for him to move to Andes. But because, like I said, the frontage is SC4, that's what our stumbling block is on this issue.
I think the consensus of this commission is that we want to make this possible for him.
Yeah, the other one, the one I was concerned with, also don't allow a brewery downtown, you know, a small brewery.
We would like that.
That's, that's, that can go to the list on...
No, I think that's what I was looking for.
Have that discussion. Because then there's something else I want to talk to you about, the center code, not now, but later, with the public informational signs that are required for every application.
Right.
Because you're giving everyone a 15-day delay every time they apply for any changes in the center.
Okay.
That's another conversation.
So, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay with the use, I was just trying to go with the legality of it, that's all.
Donna's okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so I think the essence, consensus of the commission is that they're fine with their use, projected use.
Okay.
Okay?
So we just...
So we just deal with you?
Yes.
Whatever is your window.
Thank you.
All right, we have another discussion for a text amendment for the Gifts of Love.
Hi, I'm Susan Ferguson, I'm the executive director with Gifts of Love. I think they listed Joanne, but obviously I'm not Joanne. We are here tonight to talk about a preliminary idea. It is still just very much in the idea stage, but Mike and some other town officials thought that we should bring it forward so that nobody was really caught surprised in case it does take traction. But you may remember about five years ago, Gifts of Love merged with the community farm of Simsbury, and we leased that from the town, and we grow produce in line with the deed to bring to Simsbury Social Services and our own food pantry. But running a farm, a 77-acre farm, is very expensive. And so we are always looking for other ways that we might augment our revenue and continue to enhance the farm. And we had an idea, and we've worked on it with Joe Buddha from Simsbury Historical Society, but it never really took traction until we were approached by the tourism division to host a 350th birthday party for the town in 2020. And you may know or may not know, there's a large dairy barn that's out there that we converted. We have animals in the lower part, and the upper part is really just been used for storage. And we would like to convert it to a seasonal multi-use building, which means we would go from agricultural zoning to a commercial zoning or possibly a museum status zoning.
None of those zonings exist in Simsbury.
So let me clarify.
Oh, that's what we got from Henry Megas.
The property is zoned industrial. It's I-1.
Yep.
What they approached us was that they want to convert this barn space into an event center, basically, where it could be used to rent out to private events, whether it be weddings, parties, et cetera. But this is not something, at least under the current zone, the regulations under- for the I-1 zoning district, that would be considered a use that's allowed. Because this thing will function independent of that, the Gifts of Love and classroom areas that are there, or the farm itself. So you can go in and rent the barn and have, you know, an event there. And it's not the town that would be- well, ultimately, we would be owning it, but really it's Gifts of Love applying for this. Because the only other avenue would be is if it was a- something that the town was doing, like if it was a public works facility or something, that would be allowed in any zoning district by special exception. But this is really, if- it does not fall under a category that's allowed under the current zoning for the community farm facility. It's a use that- in that zoning district, you know, you allow some business uses such as banks, restaurants, cafeterias, but you don't say something like a event or banquet facility. I don't know how to describe it without really clarifying. Maybe Susan, you can talk- speak to-
I don't know if anybody ever met with the Webb Barn in Weathersfield, and that is part of a museum, and they actually host 50 events from spring through fall, and they rent it out. You pay a fee to come in and use the space, but then you have to bring your own caterer, et cetera. And so that's what we were looking to do.
So the dilemma is, it's zoned industrial, and like I said, it's a use that's not listed as one of the specially permitted uses on page, starting on page 70 to 71 in your regs.
I don't know, comments? Jackie? Bruce?
I was wondering if the Eno Trust, my deed, has some implications for how this transition might occur, if it's even-
So-
Just that any revenue has to be invested back into the farm so that we can continue to meet the deed as far as being-
But the deed is silent on any type of revenue generating activity?
Just that it has to be put back into the farm, and that we have to always-
It's kind of a little bit hard to, you know, if I was writing the trust, I wouldn't have been as liberal as that. There are a lot of things that you can do to raise money, but they're not appropriate.
But the deed was written back in the 1800s, I don't think they thought that anything like this might come about. We do-
We have this dynamic, sort of another dimension, with other farms in Simsbury that have ambitions to do other, you know, ingenious revenue enhancing activity. And then we come to the question, well, when is a farm not a farm?
Right.
And they have some advantages of being recognized as a farm, but then they're competing with others who don't have that advantage, who are trying to run banquet facilities and yada, yada.
Right.
But some of those happen to be in a residential area.
Yeah, the difference here is this is an industrial.
Which makes it a lot worse. This is an industrial, I guess, so.
Right, and the idea is so that we can expand and enhance the farming end of it.
But your vision is to continue to have cows on the bottom floor and events on the second?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I had an experience-
It would still be an operational farm, absolutely.
But there are no cows there.
You're going to have cows on the bottom floor?
There's no cows. We have calves. We have calves, we have alpacas, we have sheep.
But they'll stay in the bottom floor?
They will stay in the bottom floor.
I attended a wedding reception two years ago in upstate New York, where the reception was on a farm, and it was an active dairy farm, where they had converted that upper, the upper reaches of their dairy barn-
The hayloft.
-to a reception center.
Right.
I mean, yeah, yeah, wedding reception. But they had their own food service to a certain extent. They did not have air conditioning, and the day I was there, it was over 90 degrees. It was hot as 80s in that place. And it wasn't pleasant.
Where the cows move.
And they went downstairs. I mean, yeah, but I understand the price was right, but the ambiance lacked a lot. So I would do a lot of research on the notion of what you could-
We don't have cows, fortunately.
I haven't seen the barn in-
The Webb Barn doesn't have air conditioning either or heat.
So you're only talking three seasons?
Right.
So you're not going to too insulated?
Right.
But this other one that she's talking about had 50 events, so.
The Webb Barn, yeah, it was successful.
See, there's no way we could have 50 events on this week. You know, step one would be to apply for a grant, for a planning grant, and to go from there, but we just wanted to make sure we were going down an avenue that would be approved or supported.
I'm not sure. Donna, you got a comment, or?
Well, I mean, I don't have the same problem with them having multiple events in that location as I would one of the farms that's inter-residential.
Yeah.
And that is the-
But also, so this would apply, this change potentially would only apply to, if they were to amend the regs to allow some sort of event facility?
It would only apply to industrial.
I-1.
So it wouldn't, we wouldn't get into the other farms.
The other ones, the other ones will be stuck with the existing regs where this is, they're kind of a unique situation compared to the other farms.
And I-1, you hardly have any.
Yeah, that's another thing.
So you're not opening up-
It's just that, you know, if someone were to tomorrow purchase a property in Herman Drive and want to convert it into an event space, they may be before you. So that's where the comment, as your staff would be, we would be looking at it more global within the other I-1 zones within Simsbury.
So we could have one of these in the middle of the solar field?
You could. You could.
Could convert one of the tobacco markets.
Adaptive reuse of one of the barns.
Because that zone allows private or commercial recreation, so you can have tennis, handball, paddleball, gymnasium, or similar recreation. You can do that, and you can have a restaurant. You're just combining the two.
And some animals.
So if we consider this a restaurant, it would be allowed. So-
Can it be a restaurant slash recreation building?
Well, as a restaurant, I don't know the definition of a restaurant, but, because I don't know if you need to initially necessarily call it an event space, because what's the restaurants or cafeterias? Or similar uses which are clearly supportive of the permitted uses.
It's not really a restaurant.
Well, is it not a restaurant if it serves-
So the false thing, so this space would only be open to individuals who rent or group organizations that rent it. A restaurant would mean you need to be open to the public.
All the time.
All the time.
Yeah.
This will not be open to the public all the time.
Right.
It would be open to the public in the sense anyone could rent the space for the duration of the calendar year that it's open, but other than that, you couldn't say on Friday night, hey, let's go to the barn, and drive over to the barn and go have dinner.
Right.
So, but you could say, you know, it's mom's 70th birthday, let's have the event there.
You could go to the barn.
You could do that. Right? You can go to the barn?
Yes, Dave. Yes.
I'm a little concerned about the Eno Trust and the fact that this really was supposed to be a poor farm. And it was, the deed was in the 20s, not in the 1800s.
Oh, sorry.
And-
No, it's early than that.
It was deeded in the eight- the original deed was, it was deeded in the late 1800s to the town.
Yep.
For the poor farm.
Yeah, it was dead by the 20s.
Yeah.
I thought it was in the 20s. In any event, it concerns me that we seem to be morphing off into other things, and in the past, I think the attorney general's been the decider of what was appropriate and how it worked for those things.
So that's one of the moving parts that they're dealing with right now, that they're, through Tom Roy and Maria's office, they're reviewing the deed, the lease, because the lease is also coming up for renewal. So these, this whole kind of melts together, this like a perfect storm of, we have several agencies that have to review this activity. So they wanted to really, they understand and have, you know, that was also in our meeting that was brought up, the deed and any potential legal issues which would be reviewed. They will be having that review, because that could, that could stop this conversation regardless of what this commission says.
Right.
So I guess they just want input, should they proceed and they need to amend the regulations, do you feel that this is, and this is not a non-binding position, do you feel it's appropriate to add such a use in the industrial zone? They would define and or file an application, unless the commission wants to take this up at a later date, but they just want a feedback before they spend any more effort or capital into this.
I think it's clear that they need to file, they need to amend the regs with a text amendment, and I think it's inappropriate for the commission to make any commitment before a public hearing on the text amendment.
Right, no, but this is similar to what with Attorney Smith last month, where they're just looking for the smell test. If anyone has any growing, major issues that you feel, no, this is not a use that's appropriate in the industrial zone. Just, they're looking for, it's non-binding, they're not going to hold you to the opinion. This is what's allowed under the statute under, for a preliminary review. So they're just, it's just initial feedback. If no one wants to say any comments, say, thank you, you have to amend the regs, that's fine. But if you want to give them any comments on what they're proposing and say, either you're way off mark or, you know, we're willing to entertain. We can just say that.
Well, what about this? If all they want to do is clean the barn out and rent out the second floor periodically to people, what's that? And the money's going to be used for the farm, like all the other money. Why isn't that part of the farm? That's, if I was-
If I was a farmer, I'd do that.
Right, exactly. I wouldn't come down here and say, you know, Mike, and Michael say, we got to go talk to the commission. No, but I understand that it's sort of a new initiative, but I don't know that it needs any regulation change. It's such a small piece of the operation, just this conversation we're having with-
With Ken.
For, right, it's a tiny piece of what's going on there. And so-
I mean, if you feel-
You're not putting a kitchen in that barn, you're not putting-
Would you put a caterer's kitchen in? Well, you have caterers, you have a kitchen now, a commercial kitchen.
We have a commercial kitchen, yes, it's very small, but-
Separate building.
Separate building, yes.
Separate building.
Where the dairy barn.
Right, right. I mean, Henry said that we do have to, you know, make it ADA accessible, we have to put in additional bathrooms, things like that.
Yeah, why is that?
Because of the, if you had like 150 people there at a wedding.
It's the occupancy.
Yeah, right.
But still, I mean, in my mind, it's arguably, it's just an extension of farm operation, so if you're making wine or if you're having baking pies in the ovens over there now, you know, those things are all nibbling away at this question.
So, and here's the tricky part. So if you're going to say the primary use is a farm, agriculture uses are not allowed in the industrial zone. So it's an existing non-conforming use.
That was there before the zone.
That was there before, that's what I'm saying, existing non-conforming. So is this an intensification of the use or expansion? Because intensification is allowed under statute, expansion is not. This is activity, it's not a currently occurring there, and it's an area that's really used for storage and for boarding of the animals. However, the one out they can have is under the existing regs, the business uses in subsection what you were reading earlier, Kevin, referring to restaurants and cafeterias. And the way that reg reads is, businesses such as banks, industrial sales room, restaurants or cafeterias, and similar uses which are clearly supportive of permitted primary use in industrial park or district. Is that enough for you to say, we could put, we don't need to amend the regs, we can put that use under this category? Then all they need to do is apply for a special exception, and we don't have to-
Special exception for what?
It's specially permitted in the I- the I-1 zoning district. That's on your existing regs.
Those uses have to be-
Oh, those uses?
Those uses.
On I-1, those are special exception.
And this is, this is two of these, we happened to get two of these eyeballs at the same time, requests that we were, there's such a substantial change to what's there and kind of different under your regs, we did not feel, we didn't want to push them to immediately say, you need a text amendment, or this is allowed under this regulation, without the commission being aware of these conversations that are occurring with staff.
It almost limits them to do it that way more than if we did a text amendment. If we did a text amendment, then they would be able to expand that kind of function. Whereas if we say this is, you know, just kind of an intensification, then they're only, they only have that ability in that barn, you know?
But 150 people, events is not a normal farm activity.
Well, they already have the farm.
But they're not conducting 150.
They're always having dinners.
The farm-to-table events are allowed, under your regs, you have the temporary event in article four, that via special, by a zoning permit, an individual's allowed to have a temporary event not to exceed three days, provided they have written approval from the chief of police, fire marshal, and building official. So they come in to Robin, they apply for his administrative zoning permit, they sign off. That's on private property. In this case, they're on, obviously, town property, they're subject to a public gathering permit. So zoning officer, et cetera, they go, everyone signs off, it's licensed through the board of selection. So that covers those temporary events that are occurring out there, you know, that's how many farm-to-table events we have, like-
Three scheduled this year. Three this year. And that's not, yeah, as many as-
Versus this conversion, that three can turn into 30 events.
Right.
So there's the difference of these two activities.
But Epstein's already at 20.
That's true.
Right.
And they haven't been for years.
Mm-hmm.
And somehow it works, and it's a farm.
I don't know. What do you think, Jackie?
I don't know either. Like you said, are, I mean, are those events 150 or 200 people? The wine?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
No, at the other-
Oh, at Simsbury.
Rosedale.
Rosedale, yeah.
I think, I would caution you for comparing this to Rosedale because it's zoned commercial, I mean, zoned residential over there, and we're dealing with an industrial property. So the question is-
It is a farm, they have a farm there.
I guess the question is, is, do you feel that this is something- I guess the question is, is, do you feel that this is something that is covered under that section I read earlier that has that all-encompassing language? If they were to apply for approvals to convert the existing storage barn into event space or?
It's not just a storage barn, it's used for livestock. As well as, currently it's being used for storage, but in the history of the barn, it's had lots of uses probably.
It has actually, both uses are in place currently. So there's, it's a two-story building. So the lower level is where our livestock is and there's storage as well because it's an L shape. So the upper barn, really the newer section in the 1930s, upper barn is the area we're talking about. So this is an 1800 barn, this is a. So you're not converting the whole building. You're not taking that whole building and turning it into something else.
Fix-up is going to be on the upper section.
Right.
Are you leaning toward seeing if they, what the deed allows and?
I think that's independent of our thing. I mean, that's really something the Attorney General's got to pass on. I'm, you know, our zoning regs are intended to protect neighbors from each other, basically. And there's nobody around them.
Yeah.
So from that perspective, I'd say, you know, I'm not so concerned.
There is on the other side of the trail, there's people. There's condos over there or whatever they are.
They're pretty far removed.
Not, not really. It's not that far. How far are the houses?
Well, they're on the opposite end of the farm.
The barns, barns toward the road.
Because down where we have the wetlands, where the trails are, the roads are trails, then there's, yeah, there's the condos on the other side.
On the other side, yeah.
Yep.
So it's not that far, I mean, noise would be heard from there. It's not entirely.
So, so we would have to have a public hearing and a special exception and make sure that the neighbors were notified?
Then you could follow Chairman's comments, consider impacts to the neighborhood base. And it's assuming you're comfortable with that section I referred to earlier in the I-1. Article seven I subsection, section four subsection B. I'm going to test your memory later, Kevin.
Check it to make sure.
Or how about this, page 71 of the regs.
I think it's more limiting to interpret it that, I think it's more limiting to interpret it that way than to do a.
An amendment?
Yeah, amendment.
Well, I think if, if one is, you know, something that we can do and is unlikely to generate a lot of controversy, but if the business opportunity seems to be presenting itself, then maybe they should give up the farm and have an amusement park up there. And we can do better for the poor with amusement parks than we can with a farm, then we ought to close the farm and make it an amusement park, right? And so we'll cross that bridge and we come to it. But for now, the vision is for a 50-event, you know, barn, that's not air-conditioned, not either. Bang animals on. It's not an easy sell. Your marketing stuff.
Yes, but they could, they could insulate it and air-condition it without our permission, so that's.
That's true, but it's going to take a lot of money to make that kind of a change.
That's a different thing.
To ratchet up.
But I think the essence of it is that people, I think that people here think that, well, that's an interesting thing. It isn't a bad idea, but we haven't heard from the public yet.
Correct.
If the neighbors came down here and force, you might see a different result. So I would encourage you to deal with the neighbors before.
Rosedale Farm in here the week after we make this thing happen.
Yeah, but competition is.
But it's different.
It's a different issue.
It's easier for them because they're.
They're not allowed to have restaurants in their zone.
It's not a restaurant.
They do weddings there.
So I guess my comment.
They want to do more, that's, we've heard that from them.
My comment would be this, is if you amend the regs explicitly describe this use, you open yourself up to someone saying, well, it's allowed in the I-1, I want to allow it now in the R-4.
Right.
If you want to use your existing regs to allow this change of use, your concerns of what will Rosedale do or what will Hall's Farm do or what will et cetera, et cetera do are eliminated for the fact that the first argument you say to them is, well, they're zoned I-1.
Right.
You are not.
Right.
And this, but, but once again, it's, it's one of those, it's a very broad language that's allowed there and we wanted to make sure that the commission was comfortable. So should an application be filed, if you don't feel the regs need to be amended, you're okay with this interpretation that it would fall under this section. And it's, it's.
Well, if we're not, then there's no application to file. Filing has to be about the regulation.
Well, it would be a special exception, so there still is a filing for a special.
But that's still something that we, I don't think we can say, oh, yeah. I think the commission is sufficiently non, what is it, non-specific. I don't think we can say that, that that would be something that would fly through without somebody being concerned. There could be a whole new commission.
And they're not looking for, we want to know that this will be approved, it's more of a which path do we take? Can we go under your existing or should we go amend the regs? That's, that's really the only thing we're looking for.
We can't answer that for you. I mean, that's really the fact.
But you've heard all of our feedback, I mean, hopefully that helps.
Yes, yes.
Like you said, this is an oddball, this is.
But, you know, potentially, if somebody could ask DeCrescenzo for his opinion too.
He will be consulted with the deed, so we can, we can have that conversation.
So when that issue is tackled, we can be engaged in a sense on the other.
Okay, I'd like to move on, I think you've had opportunities to hear.
Thank you.
We have short-term residential rentals to discuss.
And zoning regulations amendments, only because we were going to talk about.
Yes.
Okay, a couple of these things. Wherever you want to start.
You want to do reg update first?
Sure.
Yes.
So I did not receive from Jamie any written reports for your subcommittee meetings.
Yeah, we had one more meeting, we were trying to get together, Mike's not here. I think we were pretty much resolved, but.
If, if we can circle back and discuss that tonight, what, I've been working with Robin on reorganizing your regs and making it so that you can read them. And I wanted to incorporate those changes into them, so it's not more user-friendly. And the chairman, I shared with Dave tonight a copy of the regs and I could, we could share it with a few other members later. But it's something that, you know, we, we did retain the services of Glenn Chalder almost two years ago to do this work. We, we wanted to, we started working on this and with myself and Robin, we've, we've done this in other communities, redoing the regs like this. And it's, the product, the version we have is a very rough version with certain areas. We have questions that we'd like to discuss with the commission. And we wanted to incorporate findings from the members of the subcommittee, such as the accessory dwelling units and temporary liquor license. I know Robin was aware that there was some understanding reached in these, in these subjects, but I don't have what that specific language is. And I, we can incorporate that into a version of the, of the regs and then possibly have this resolved, at least set for a hearing in September.
That'd be great.
Which regs are you talking about? Are you talking about the ones Glenn did?
Yes, zoning regulations, townwide zoning regulations.
Because I thought you only did two of the, I thought there was another section that wasn't done.
So we can.
Picked it up and added.
We, we picked it up and finished it, the two of us, staff. We've actually been working on it on and off for past six months, but with the past three weeks, we just said, this is a priority and needs to be completed. This is a project we want done this year.
Right.
So this has been, mine and Robin's list of priority goals that we want done by the end of 2018 is we want a final version and we want to present this to the commission, set for a hearing and hopefully adopted before 2019. And the main goal has been just reorganizing, shuffling, dealing with, you know, contradiction in the regs. There was a few clarifications in there. And I can share with members if you would like a copy of the new, of organized.
One of the things we were talking about was the accessory dwellings. And I don't, as the subcommittee, I guess I'm, my, I'm asking, because we talked about this when Glenn was taking care of it and it keeps coming before us, are we okay to limit the square footage of an accessory dwelling?
We did come up with some numbers for that, yeah.
No second exit? Because that's in our regs right now, is a secondary exit is, has to be.
As required, yeah.
Yeah, and shared utilities.
Shared utilities was one thing we came up with, but also a door connecting the main residence and the accessory dwelling.
But not an exterior?
You could have an exterior, that, that wasn't the issue, that the idea was that if you had a shared door, you're less likely to rent to somebody if you had the shared door.
Yeah, I'd like to get rid of the exterior entrance as well, requirement.
Yeah, they can have it.
As a requirement, they can have it.
Exactly, definitely as a requirement.
Actually, the question would be is, so previous committee I worked for, we had an accessory dwelling unit, right? That we did not have a rental issue because the three, three safety checks that were in there. One, the accessory dwelling units were limited in 600 square feet. It was the maximum size you can get.
Right.
Two was you could not have an external exit to that, that unit, you had to go through the main house. And the last one was that utilities were not allowed to be separated, all the utilities were one.
Right, and we did.
With those three balances or place or checks. There were no rentals. They functioned only as a in-law apartment.
Oh, wait a second now, what, we talked about occasionally. You are mistaken in having the impression that we resolved this, that our committee was in agreement.
No, that's why we're talking about.
We had one more meeting.
Right, that's why, that's why we brought it up.
I was interested in seeing as a reflection of the more common practices. Even an honest look at what are the practices in the Farmington Valley, and Bloomfield and Glastonbury? What's happening in those towns? Believe me, they're all over the place. What we have here, you won't find in any other town. And you might ask yourself, why is that? I asked myself that, I don't know, why don't we, as a, as a strategy, try to reflect common practice? We could be using that as a defense against, you know, arbitrary decisions about some of these issues if we knew that they were. But I know our recently departed planning director didn't have any information on what's going on in the other communities. So I guess my thought was, before we resolve accessory dwelling units, take a good look at what's going on around here.
But are you, I, I hear you, I'm moving it forward. Is the subcommittee meeting, he'd like to get this, something.
We have no meetings set.
Okay, that's, that would probably be the next thing.
Okay.
We can, the subcommittee and you can sit down and.
Yes.
And come to a resolution, you can hear the discussions we've had.
Yeah.
Like we've had the discussion of the exterior door, a lot of people would prefer to have the ability to enter their apartment without tracing through the, I would rather my mother be able to come and go without necessarily coming in to see me all the time, you know, that kind of conversation, but then to have that shared door. But we have, I mean, there's a lot to discuss.
Oh, I know. That's a legitimate concern, when we think about, what was Dave trying to get at when he wrote the charge to the committee? I don't know if the door was, you know, that's not what we hear people arguing about and.
It's the rental.
Yeah, when, by the accessory dwelling, you know, it's the hard feelings are about, why is it there at all? It's going to reduce the value of my house, now we're in a two-family neighborhood and all that stuff. So there's a larger question of, do we need it at all? And can we put some sort of requirement that be a relative handicapped or medically necessitated?
You can't, you can't.
Well, that's what our departed planning director told us, but I can show it to you, other towns are doing it right now. Now granted, they may not be using Bob DiCrescenzo's law firm, there is some other law firm, but most towns are represented by competent attorneys out of the heart of the law firms.
I think this is for the subcommittee.
Yeah.
Yes, so why don't you guys schedule a meeting and do that, and let's get on to the.
Was there one other thing for the zoning?
Short-term resi.
There were two items, I thought, okay.
Yeah.
Well, can I, can I suggest that, you know, normally we don't meet in August? But could we just have the subcommittee on those two weeks that are normally would be here and then some of us could also attend?
Yeah, Tom, I mean, Tom comes, I mean.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, whatever, you know, if you're here, you're here, if not, you're not, but just do the regular.
Yeah, what are the dates?
Which Monday would, would the group prefer, the first Monday in August or the third Monday in August? And then let me give you the, I'll give you the dates in a second, I apologize.
Why don't we just schedule it for both and then?
Whoever's here, it's here.
Yeah, the, the sixth and the 20th.
I'm good.
All right, I'll schedule a special meeting then for August 6th, 7 o'clock.
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be regulation update.
Great.
That'll be the subject, so there could, it could be anything under the sun related to regulation update, just.
Perfect.
And then maybe also at that meeting, we can, I'll share with you our rough draft of, of the reorg of the, of the regs.
If you could send that out in advance.
I will send it out before I go home this evening to the group, how's that?
Okay.
And you can look at it.
Are you going to send it by email or you're just going to put it in that Dropbox?
I'm going to send it by email so that you, you can.
Just put it in the Dropbox.
It's too big.
Okay. I can do that.
It's a bigger document. Put it in Dropbox.
Okay.
That's fine.
I will do that.
Thanks.
Okay, the next question is short-term residential things. We've got a situation where people are complaining, residents are complaining about Airbnb businesses really, running in residential places in town. The fun thing about it is you can go in Airbnb and look at Simsbury and find them all.
Yep.
And so Robin did that, sent them letters saying it is not permitted in Simsbury. And now the question is, what should we do about it? Should we, I think we have to amend the regs no matter what.
I agree, absolutely.
But number two, possibility of creating a licensing situation where somebody has to get a license to do it would be something the, that the town, selectmen or town manager would manage.
That was not going to help people not liking.
Well, it would, it would control it in that you'd have to go get a license to do it.
Where are BNB's allowed now?
Well, it's actually not allowed under your regs, you permitted.
We had two, yeah.
Two BNB's in, in town via special exception as home occupations. The, the issue what we're running into is, so that we have 17 properties that are running Airbnb, HomeAway, et cetera ads. We're, we're able to find everyone on the internet and they all received that same letter that you, that you have a copy in front of you from Robin. The issue is we have out of the 17, four, maybe seven, that are individuals who are buying homes for the sole purpose of running a rental unit, that they don't live at this house, they're just buying a house, renovating it and running an ad up on whatever various internet service to rent out rooms or the house. So it's not just someone renting out a room or renting out their house while they're away. It's individuals that are using these as, I don't want to call them hotels, but under your regs, it kind of, it, it's, it flirts with a definition of hotel motel under the regs, so, which is not allowed in the residential zoning districts, so.
How do you differentiate that between renting a house?
It's, it actually says this right here, it's because it's fewer than 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, you, I, I'm looking at both of them together. But again, this is something that we should definitely talk about in August, about putting this in.
This is an issue that, just because the nature of the internet, all of our surrounding communities are faced with this.
Oh, yeah.
And I have actually posted on our professional listserv to just say, what's everyone else doing? The only community that has passed anything is the city of Hartford in this area. They actually passed zoning regulation dealing with short-term residential units. They actually passed zoning regulation dealing with short-term residential units. I can share that with you. This was also a topic at our last, we do a, a legal update for all members of the Connecticut Planning Association. And at that meeting, you know, the presenter, one of the attorneys from Westport, Connecticut, basically said, I'm advising my clients, if you're renting out rooms running an Airbnb, you're going to come get an affidavit and say you're a legal non-conforming use, and you're going to continue regardless of what the town does. So that is why Robin sent out this letter saying, based on my interpretation of the regs, you do not fit as a use that's allowed in town.
And have you gotten a response from any of their attorneys yet?
Oh, we had a, this went out last week, and our phone rang all day from about, probably a dozen of the people have received these letters. And we're anticipating at least one of them may appeal her decision to the zoning board of appeals. So this, this is a, this is an issue that you very, you're going to have to deal with it one way or another. And we wanted, because there's so much concern that's coming from one of the neighbors on, on these properties, we wanted to bring this to your attention, say, we're looking to work on something, but we want to make sure that you're okay with whatever direction staff goes on this, because we do not want to place the commission in a position where...
Well, no, I don't think that's what you want to be saying, that we, we need to be thinking about this and approaching it in sync. So you're not, we're not compelled to approve and endorse what you're doing.
Right. Correct, correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think Robin's correct in what she's done. So I would say that we would support Robin's decision here in telling these people that they're not allowed under the current reg, but then we got to figure out what...
What to do.
How we should do it.
Yeah. What modifications?
And you could, you could decide, we can have this conversation, you said, you know what, I, I don't think it's appropriate, we're going to do nothing. We'll let the opinion stand, and that's it. That's our opinion.
That's the end of it.
So you, you have that ability after we discuss this matter. And I could share with you Hartford's reg, and I'll share with you a few other regs that are from, throughout the country on this matter.
There was a town in Europe that just had to address this because it's a popular tourist location, and...
Well, London.
All of their, all of their housing was going toward these freestanding Airbnbs, and what they did was they outlawed the freestanding, and it had to be owner occupied, limited to one or two rooms sort of thing. And to free up all those buildings that were just getting bought to, you know...
Just, I was just in Boulder, Colorado, a few weeks ago, and I stayed for a week in a...
Yeah.
BNB that was a half-million-dollar condo a guy bought in October to make an Airbnb out of. He doesn't live there, he doesn't live anywhere near there. It was a nice place, very convenient, upscale.
Yeah.
I don't know what their regulations are, but there are lots of Airbnb places in Boulder, Colorado.
Can I just ask, so if 30 days of town began issuing notice of violations, does that have any teeth? What does that mean?
Well, so, so first off, this is putting them on notice, this is the interpretation of the zoning enforcement officer, recommend, she's recommending that they stop the use. If they continue the ads, if you put on notice, it preserves her from a, a non-conforming situation, that she's told them, I looked at the regs.
Okay.
You, you don't meet our regs.
And if they keep doing it?
You keep doing this, and enforcement action will be coming.
Which could be a fine?
That's one of those.
Eventually.
Okay.
So notice of violation would be issued, then the next step would be cease and desist with, after the, the corrective dates expire, they would be subject to a $150 a day fine. But they would have at least, you know, two 60-day, two 30-day periods or 60 days to correct or, or seek an, an appeal to the zoning board of appeals. So they have their due process before a citation is issued.
So then there needs to be a policy in place before that time lapses?
Not necess...
If they continue doing it, and they have 30 days, and then another 30, and then they can appeal, doesn't there have to be some policy?
They're already not in compliance, though.
Yeah.
They're already...
Is that open to interpretation, or is that fact?
No, that's what they're saying.
Well, I think what you find is, zoning, zoning board of appeals will find no hardship. You can't make your own hardship.
Got it.
So that's not going to fly. But they will go to an attorney, who will attack our interpretation that it's prohibited, and it will go to court, and some judge will make a determination. And we might win, we might lose.
Because it's not specific.
Hmm?
Because it's not specifically calling out...
Well, that's going to be their argument, I think. And that, you know, when you look at the number of these things throughout the commu, their country, you know, there's going to be somebody saying, why don't you guys be more reasonable?
I have to tell you, in March I stayed in Airbnb in Clearwater, Florida, and it was a property in a very upscale neighborhood, but very densely tree and wooded and stuff. But the property that we stayed on had two ancillary buildings, one of which was a caboose from the train, that they'd actually had moved onto the property and converted to a...
A room, yeah.
Yeah, an apartment for Airbnb. Now, it was hard to see it from the street, but I don't know what the regulations are in Clearwater, but it must be pretty loose, in any case. I think it's something that should be addressed one way or the other. What I'm anxious about is moving this to the top of the, of the...
Both of the specific examples are...
This, this isn't something that should command the lion's share of our time right now, as you point out. I mean, I can't tell you how many times, I can't even guess how much money the town, town has spent on consultants on the zoning regulations, but it's some big six-figure number, for sure. Because I can remember many efforts and many consultants, and all came to the same result. We ran out of money, we ran out of time, they left, and there wasn't courage. And so maybe you've got it licked, but there are other things that we are struggling with. This needs attention, but shouldn't be on the mind necessarily.
And we wanted to put this on your agenda, because you could get a written request from someone, is similar to the preliminary discussions you had tonight, and we didn't want you to be surprised and, and find out this is going on in town, and your zoning officer took the stance on this use. So it's really, it's, it's meant to inform you of the issue, and as Bruce said, we, we have some priorities that we really want to focus on, so this is not cutting the line on other matters.
But I do believe that we realize that it has to be addressed in zoning, or, or it's going to be decided by some court.
Right.
And I think that the August meetings can include that as...
Yeah, it would.
Yeah. And like I said, I'll keep your agenda as regulation update. So items such as this, which are related to updating the regs, will be covered in that meeting.
Great.
And then any information you get on Airbnb regs anywhere?
I will, I will share with you Hartford's reg and the presentation from our, our legal update that we attended earlier this month.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. It's time.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Kevin? Hold in favor?
That's Kevin's job.